All right, everybody.
Okay, she's starting.
Here we go, I'm gonna go.
Hey, audience, good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Directors. I would ask that you join me in a moment of silence to begin our meeting this evening. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, I just want to let everybody know, thanks for, thanks for holding up with us, those of you that are home watching, you're in a lot warmer spot than we are. And Rhonda McCrane is not with us here this evening, but I do have Lyle Schmidt on the phone, so I just wanted to let everyone know that, so I am not talking to myself or the desk, I'm actually talking to Lyle. So with that, I will go ahead and read our mission statement this evening, and the mission statement is that the Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations, and seeing that the boardroom is empty, almost, I'm going to assume that there is no one here this evening who wishes to address the board. All right, then seeing no one, we will move on to our consent agenda, which this evening consists of six items, the minutes of the January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, a donation from Nestle USA, the Waterloo Career Center Change Order Number Seven, and setting the date of the public hearing for Longfellow Elementary Demolition Project. Are there any items that members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item D, please.
Item D, okay, thank you. Anything else? So can I get a motion to place items A, B, C, E, and F on the table, please?
Some would.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all right, thank you. And any, woo-hoo, any discussion on those? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of the following five consent agenda items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same, thanks, Lyle, and those opposed, same sign. And chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item D, which is on page sixteen, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges with gratitude this donation in the amount of five thousand dollars from Nestle USA.
Some would.
Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, Astor, and discussion?
Yeah, I just was wondering, Jane, as far as Nestle, have they done this before? And as far as how do they pick Lowell, or do they, have they rotated schools, or what is the process? And I just wanted to thank Nestle, because this is awesome.
It is, it is amazing. I think Nestle has been a longtime supporter of our district, and they have given other things at other times, and I should have looked up the list so that I could have answered your question. And as far as, I'm not actually sure about the history of why they, why they chose Lowell at this time, sometimes, I mean, organizations have a, various reasons why they connect with one particular, it might be a, maybe it was an ask from Lowell's part, maybe they knew somebody, sometimes it's an employee who has a spouse in, at Lowell, it's a variety of things, and so I'm not exactly sure of the, the history of how it was chosen, I don't know, Stephanie, I'll pause for a moment, do you know, Dr. Mohorn?
I have not been given any information, so I... I want to say we have been doing it with, I believe Nestle has done this donation for three to five years with Lowell.
Okay.
Specifically with Lowell.
And Sue, I would second that, to for sure thank Nestle for this very generous donation, so...
Right, and it'd be cool to find out how they got connected with Lowell.
Yeah, we can find out some information on the history.
Because just being based in Waverly, I think it's awesome that they're coming to Waterloo and go Waterloo.
Right, right, absolutely, yeah.
That was the only reason I pulled it.
No, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
That's awesome.
Thank you, and I know Lowell appreciates it very much as well.
You know, we make sure that they get a thank you on our behalf, too, and sometimes it's really nice if we can send them pictures of, you know, for the wellness and the nutrition, the things that they're donating to, when, if we buy equipment, whatever, or host events on their, you know, with, using their dollars, we take pictures and make sure they get pictures of it, so they can see their money in action.
Awesome. Thanks, Sue. All right, then all those in favor of approving the recommended motion of the donation from Nestle USA, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our consent agenda, then, for the evening, and that takes us to board policy changes, this is the first reading for these items, they're on page twenty-one, item G, and now that we have Sharice Ortmann in the house tonight, if anybody has any questions, this is regarding our 2E, or twice exceptional, programming. Does anybody have any questions for Sharice on this? You can see your exhibit there.
Okay, sorry.
Okay?
Is this a grant-funded program?
Is it a grant-funded program?
No, do we, it's part of our...
There are some pieces, I believe, that the Waterloo Schools Foundation has done some funding.
Okay, got it.
So, thank you, Sharice.
I don't think it doesn't sound...
Is the button on? Is the little green light on?
How about push?
There.
Green light on.
Lyle, can you hear?
Waterloo Schools Foundation, along with private donors, who have been able to provide us with some soft monies, so that we could really build the program up over the last four years. At this point, I'm trying to get the leverage so that our staff understand that the 2E monitoring tool is a document that needs to be followed, since it's not an IEP or a 504, sometimes we don't get the same kind of response from our staff when we're trying to implement the unique needs of kids who are gifted with a disability.
And Sharice, just for clarification, this is a new policy that we're adding because this program is, is, is new to us as well, and not brand-new, but new to us as well, so...
Correct, and we are actually the only district in the entire state of Iowa that has full district programming and identification process, and then supports in place that's system-wide. We're really proud of that, and it's not currently state-funded, and I'm hoping to push for that, but until then, I'd love to have that policy in place to support us locally.
Great, and that's why, for those of you who don't have the document, but for the board, that's why there's no cross-outs, or changes, or red marks, because this is brand-new, so it's all, it's all new verbiage for us.
I did bring, though, if the board members would like one of the resource books, we've actually already updated it since we first created it three years ago, because we're finding new things, new additions, new efficient ways to identify and support our, our students, but if you'd like to have a copy, it kind of gives you a layout of when 2E is suspected, and the monitoring tool, and how we go about that.
Great, Pam's coming to get those, so thank you.
Any particular, quick question, any particular reason why this year you guys decided to make it a policy?
It wasn't really fully rolled out, it took us a while to develop it. Last year was a soft rollout, where there were a couple of buildings that had 2E time built in to their calendar. This year was a full rollout, where it's required to have 2E time built in to my gifted ed teacher's schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
And we have actually done some, some meet publicity around the 2E program, I believe, was it Kingsley that filmed, we filmed a video, was it Kingsley?
Right.
Yeah, I couldn't remember which building, we had, we had our videographer go and, and get some footage of that, and just put together some neat information about the 2E programming that we provide for students, and so if, if the public or any listeners wanted to see that, go to Waterloo Schools, our homepage, and then go to, click on the YouTube link, and then you, you can even just Google "twice exceptional," and you'll see it, it's, there's some really, really good information on there.
This year, we've also hosted two big school districts who are starting in their district. Des Moines Public visited us in the fall, and so did Rochester in Minnesota. Minnesota doesn't have 2E state funding either, so we figured that as the Midwest, if we could kind of let our legislatures know there's a need for this unique population, we feel that we'd have a little bit more leverage to go to the state and make some state change.
So is this like eligible, how, how do kids identify, does it, like, teachers identify kids, or?
Sometimes. There's different indicators, usually discrepancy within test scores is a big indicator. Teachers will often say, maybe this student is significantly discrepant from their peer in one area, but then discrepant from their peer in an area of need, so you get that, when that dichotomy presents itself, that one end and the other end.
Right.
That's when we start the process of collecting evidence. Sometimes it turns out, right now, we have fifty-nine identified as twice exceptional in our district, and that number's growing, we're still collecting evidence to, to move to identification for about another twenty-four kids currently, but sometimes the collection process shows they're not significantly discrepant, it just might mean some differentiation in the regular classroom to meet that student's strength in the classroom, and they might not necessarily need to be identified as 2E with the monitoring tool that follows them from, as long as they're in the Waterloo Schools, so kindergarten through twelfth grade.
So where do you find the successful, as far as, you know, the testing discrepancies, and how young do you start that, that that was, is a potential, or is a probability, I guess?
Well, we've actually started testing as young as preschool, but we don't identify until students are in kindergarten, same with gifted education, we don't formally identify students to subject skip or for gifted education until they've been in elementary school. But we have done testing in preschool and indicate that there is some discrepancy on both ends, a lot of the time we'll use the nagglieri, one, it's culturally fair, and for a lot of the 2E population, maybe the reading or the language is the area of need, and it's not timed, which is also a barrier for some of our 2E students.
Anything else for Sharice? So this is just the first reading, and we'll be back in two weeks for the final, so if anybody, I'm assuming if any of you have any further questions, you can always email Sharice or Tara, either one.
I've known in the last five years that it really helps to say this is district policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, now we'll have it.
So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next item on our agenda, then, is a second reading, and this is, of the following policies, and I'll go ahead and read what those are. Three oh five point five administrator designee, four oh eight point eight resignation, six oh two point six special education, six oh two point seven multicultural and gender fair education, six oh three point four home or hospital services, eight oh one point three selection of an architect, and eight oh one point seven requests for improvement and alterations. And that recommended motion is that the board approve the following policies, and again, administrator designee, resignation, special education, multicultural and gender fair education, home or hospital services, selection of an architect, and request for improvements and alterations. Can I get that motion on the table? Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jesse, and discussion. You all have these policies in your exhibit, so, and the red ones are the crossed out, you know what I mean, the, the changes are highlighted in red, and... So any questions on those? All right, well then, seeing none, all those in favor of approving those board policy changes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you, Lyle, and those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes the action items on our agenda this evening, and so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for our superintendent's report.
Sure. It would be most appropriate for me to address some of the weather things that are going on right now, I know that it's the, the topic that's in everybody's mind, I actually did a couple of interviews today with the media, because it's such a, a hot topic, and I kind of, that's a pun, right, a hot topic?
Oxymoron.
Oxymoron, right, there you go, thank you. So the question that I'm getting asked the most recently is, how do you make the decision? How do you know what to do? How do you, you know, you're not a meteorologist, how in the world do you make this decision? And is there a, a policy that you look at, we just got done talking about policies, is there a policy where you just look it up, and then that will tell you, and I can only say I would wish that there would just be a policy I could look it up, and, and the decision would be made for me. In, in actuality, for anybody listening, what I would say is that it is an extremely well-thought-out process, and it, it is based on, you know, the, the opinions and the facts of, you know, from many, many different people, we talk, we're talking with meteorologists the whole time, we're looking at a variety of websites, we're talking with a variety of people, we have a network of superintendents, you know, certainly all of the superintendents in the local areas, Cedar Falls Superintendent Andy Petit and I talk non-stop, you know, where, when the weather's approaching, we, you know, sometimes we're talking every, you know, half hour, one hour, but we also have superintendents in other parts of the state, depending on where the, where the weather's coming from, that we will call out, you know, yesterday, we were looking at, you know, how was, how was the weather coming this morning, we were checking wind speeds and, in Esterville and, and in the west part of the state, and so we were calling people that live there to see, you know, how things are going, and of course, we were checking the, the wind speeds online as well. So there's so much that goes into it, there are certain things that really make a difference to us, first of all, we really do look at the, the, how much the forecast has varied over time, sometimes we'll get a report, you know, one day the, the weather report could be five to eight inches, and the next day it's a trace to two inches, and then it goes back to three to five, and so when we listen to that, the very first thing that tells me is that we don't know exactly the track the storm is going to take, and so if that's the case, I'm always a little more leery, because we just don't know. On the contrary, on the flip side, sometimes we will see a forecast that just comes and stays all the way through, for example, the forecast that's coming for the cold weather on Wednesday has really not deviated much at all, if anything, maybe it's gotten just a little bit worse, it, I think it was, the original forecast was for forty-five below wind chill, and now I think it's fifty-five below wind chill, so it's, you know, right in there, I'm not exactly sure what ten degrees at that point feels like, I don't feel like the difference between forty-five and fifty-five below, but, you know, so we're really looking at the variability of that. The other thing that we, we use a lot is the, the hourly forecast, when you are looking at a school, there's always a, a decision to be made, do you, do you hold school on time, do you postpone for two hours, or just delay for two hours, or do you need to cancel all total, and so the, that's why the hourly really plays into that, for example, today, when we looked at the forecast, we knew that, you know, we, we got, you know, multiple inches of snow, but the problem was the wind was going to come up around ten o'clock, and so the question is, do we start with a delay and then make a decision at the last minute? And, and we realize it's, you know, it's a significant issue for families, you know, you, you, if the parents happen to head to, to work and they haven't made arrangements, and then they assume, you know, the child's going to go to school, and it, it is, it is, we, we always default to having school every day on time, that's always where we start, and then we try to make a decision whether we need to cancel or delay, so those, you know, those are things that play into that, and then, of course, we're in, in constant contact with our transportation personnel, and we're looking at the bus, the chances of, of solid, consistent, predictable bus performance, and again, on, on Wednesday, we, we have some concerns about whether the buses would be able to perform well in a, a fifty-five below wind chill, so, you know, really looking at that. So there's just really a lot that goes into it, and if there's anything I've learned is sitting in this seat for five years, there are varying opinions about what we should be doing. Today, I got two emails from people, which I actually do really appreciate, if people take the time to email, I'm always appreciative, but one of them was, I cannot believe you are having, you're not having school today, when I was in school, you know, whatever, whatever, and I, and I, and I totally understand that, and the next one was, thank you so much for making the right decision, I'm a hundred percent sure that it's the right decision. I wish I were so sure, so I just, you know, you, I just know that there's varying, and I, I, so I guess what I, what I mostly want to say is just, you know, thank you for your understanding, again, the default is to have school every day on time, but we know we live in Iowa, and we know that that isn't always possible, so just even tonight, I've had, just before the board meeting, I had a couple of superintendents who called, and they were trying to give me their prediction of where, you know, where they are on, on their, their call for tomorrow. We do not always follow suit, we, we don't, we are certainly a different entity, and so we, while we take a lot of feedback from, you know, ten to fifteen different sources, whether it's professionals or other, you know, people in, you know, leadership positions, we'll, we'll look at those, but we do make an independent decision every single time, we do really work, probably most collaboratively, with Cedar Falls, but I just thought maybe that would be a little bit helpful, it, it is, it is definitely the worst part of my job, I love everything about my job except for the weather-related decisions, because I know that we are influencing approximately eight thousand families, and so I don't take that lightly, including my own, I have children in this, you know, in, in school, and so it, it's, it's always a quandary, and I know a lot of the board members up here have kids in the system, and it's, it's, it's tough, and we, I, I understand it completely, so I appreciate the, the, the grace and the patience and, and the understanding, and we will continue to do the very, very best we can, and if there are questions that you think would be helpful for me to address right now, I'd be happy to entertain those before we move on to board comments.
No. I... Nope. I didn't know if you did or not. Maybe. No, I, I want to just echo that, Jane, that was the thing I was going to say, is just for Grace, we, none of us can control the weather, I think we all wish we could, but we can't, and I will say, speaking as the country mouse who drove in tonight, our roads are very bad, I live, you know, several miles outside of Waterloo, and, yeah, they're not, they're not nice at all, so they are badly drifting shut, and having a child stuck out there in the cold or on a bus gives me, all of us heartburn, so...
Yeah, it's, it's rough.
So, I'm going to say, so the question that people keep asking myself, are we going to be in school until July?
Yeah, you know, as it, as it turns out, we actually are working on that, you know, luckily, the school year this year, we had, the last day of school was scheduled for May thirty-one, so we have had other times when the last scheduled day was maybe, you know, June seventh, and then we were adding days on top of that, so we're still looking, you know, it, it's still early June, but you, I, and I know people say that tongue-in-cheek, but I, I can't remember exactly, let's see, we can figure it out right now, thirty-first, one, two, three, four, five, I guess we're up, yeah, we're up to the, yeah, June fifth right now, and, you know, I, I think, I think the, the not very, yeah, we've had, we've had...
No, the thirty-first is a Friday.
A Friday, and then we have a, yeah, Saturday, Sunday, and then we come back for, right now, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so, no, actually, we had one snow, yeah, we had one snow day built in, so just the Tuesday is where we are right now, so, the fourth, but...
Part of us is challenged of, you know, the state pushing back our start date till...
It, it is, it is.
I mean, that's, that's, you said that's going to be a positive, you can't start before the twenty...
Right.
Almost end of August, well, you gotta have next number of days, but this is June.
Right.
We were able to start earlier in August.
Yeah, I, you know, and I, I, at a previous meeting, Jesse, I totally agree with that, because at a previous meeting, I told everybody that our start date for next year is August twenty-sixth, because the twenty-third falls on a Friday, so we don't necessarily want to start school on a Friday, so we're waiting until the twenty-sixth, but that's three, you know, the twenty-third, the twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth, I, I realize those are, you know, sometimes those are, that's a Friday, Saturday, but when the twenty-third falls on a Tuesday, we can get three days in that week, or, or four days in, in this case, we can't start till the following Monday, so as we look at the calendar, as that comes before you at the very next board meeting for your approval, we'll be getting that out pretty soon for, for, for input to, we're actually going to put it out on social media, but as we get feedback on that, what, what people are going to notice about next year's calendar is, it goes until June, it does, because we just can't, it, you just can't get out when you don't start until the twenty-sixth of August, and, and, you know, it, we're going to go the same number of days regardless of when we start, so I know people don't, you know, some people prefer to wait until a little bit later in August and then go a little bit longer, and then there are other people who would prefer to start on the fifteenth of August and be out in, you know, mid-May, so, a-again, it's one of those, you can't really please everybody, but it, it is, it is a challenging winter right now, and, and we're looking at, you know, I, there's questions about, just about every day this week, you know, maybe Friday, Friday I think is probably going to be an easy decision, but, you know, we're looking at...
Saturday's going to be good.
Saturday will be good, Saturday, I'm going to be resting and relaxing and not getting up at four o'clock in the morning, so...
No, to check road conditions.
Yeah, yeah, we do start the process about four-thirty in the morning, and sometimes a little bit earlier, but usually by four-thirty, we're, you know, we're up and at it, and, and we have our, you know, people have computers set up, and we're just trying to get a feel for it, so, not an easy...
Jane?
Yes?
If, if I could share, there, I have been hearing some feedback on the number of scheduled days off during the year, that there aren't that many weeks that you really get five full school days in, so that's one comment, and something that, that might be able to be changed.
And I guess, just what, in listening to you and the comments I've gotten, and at work and places out and about, I guess I would just, instead of Grace, I would say for the opportunity to look through a different lens or scope when you're judging, and, you know, you don't live out in the country, or, I mean, in my case, my kids could walk a block and, and they're at school, or, but kids, some kids in the district walk two miles, or, you know, at, at the farthest, but some kids don't have coats, you know, so look at the lens of, not just your narrow-minded lens, but the lens of every kid in our district, and I think if you look at that, it, it lends, the lens expands, and, and you're looking at something in more of a realistic light than your own tunnel vision.
Yeah.
And, and because I, you know, I, I got on somebody at work because they were really angry about it, I said, you drop your kids off at a door, and you drop them off, and they go inside, and all's good, and you pick them up at the door, that's not the case for probably seventy-five percent of our students, so, you know, and you had mentioned too, that varying opinions, and just on anything, start date, stop date, snow day, not snow day, anything in life is going to give us a varying in opinion, and so you just are doing your best educated guess, and that's all you can do, so I applaud you for that.
Well, thank you, and, and really, I do think the majority of, the vast majority of people have been, staff included, have, you know, I think people are, are, are understanding of the difficulty that lies before us, and it, I, I agree, you know, I think we all see things from what we know, you know, the, what, what is our normal is not everybody else's normal, but we see it from our normal, our opening, yeah, we, we judge it from our normal, and so, you know, we do kind of, we, we very often on many things, we have blinders on because that's how we operate, and so it, you know, it takes some practice, and it takes some intentional, intentional practice to see it from other lenses, and to, you know, think through, okay, how, what other things might have impacted this decision, and once you think through it, and, and regardless of what the decision is, it could be something, you know, even in, we, we talk very often about legislative decisions, but I also know that very often when those decisions are made, sometimes they're made with, you know, they certainly would have a different lens from what we might, and so the best thing you can do is ask questions and try to get in people's mind and say, okay, tell me why that decision was made, instead of, you know, so it, it's, it is not an easy decision, and I guess if anybody wanted the job, that part, I would be, I would be happy to shift that part off, but, but, you know, it, it comes with the position, and I'm happy to do it, it's just, it's, you know, it is what it is.
Well, I'm sure every year we also have new community members who have never seen what Iowa winter looks like, or could, and...
Sure, yeah, right.
It's, it can be a very shocking experience for them.
If you want it done.
Yeah, yeah, it's startling, so, thank you.
All right, I'm going to start down here to my left with Ms. India.
I'm just want to remind parents and individuals about conferences coming up, I just received my notice, but just put on your calendar, February twelfth and fourteenth, school conferences will be happening, contact your teachers, just in case kids don't send, bring the piece of paper home, we are having conferences about next two weeks, we will remind you again, because we do have another board meeting before that time, but they are upcoming, the last one for the spring.
Yeah.
So, that's it.
Thanks, India. Jesse?
No comments tonight.
No comments tonight.
Sue?
No comments.
Lyle?
Uh, no comments.
Astor?
No comment.
I just have one quick thing. On Saturday, West High will be hosting the large group state competition. There's four of them happening across the state, and West High will be hosting that. So if you want to come see some really cool, you want to see choral reading, or you want to see musical theater, any of that improv, yeah, improv is pretty cool, too, one-act plays. That is, will be starting at eight, and I think it goes until almost five at West High. So it's a big deal to, to host the state tournament. So best of luck to everybody that will be participating in that. And our next board meeting, as India stated, will be February eleventh, right back here in this room. And if there's no further business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Thank you, Jessie, and second Astor. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a great night, stay safe and warm.